I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, June 5th. It is 6:30 on my watch. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the village hall here, as well as there are some folks on the Zoom. The Zoom link is top of the agenda. There's also an audio call, an audio call and number also the top of the agenda for those that choose to use that. With that, we have a quorum. The agenda is properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If there is someone from the public who would like to speak, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. With that, we did have one individual submit a form. They didn't wish to speak, but Sarah Stein from 400 Drummond Hill, Dear Phil, just wanted to make sure that, put a plug in for the library program that we do here in Cottage Grove. Any others in the room or on Zoom? Okay. Then we'll move right to discuss and consider meeting minutes from our regular board meeting held on May 15th. Any questions, comments, edits regarding the meeting minutes as presented?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
First by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we move right down to presentation of board. We are going to swear in Officer Greenwald. Chief? There'll be a test, by the way. I'm just kidding. You want to use the mic for those on the Zoom? Thank you. And then, Chief, just make sure they pull the...
So, I'm talking to Riley Greenwald. He came to the Village of Cottage Grove in December. He was hired, started in January, attended Mass College Academy for Law Enforcement, and just graduated on May 12th. He's going to the T.O.N. program. At this moment, he'll be transitioning to night shift in the future. His background, he was born out in California. Parents moved here when he was a child to the Winnebago County area. Graduated from Winnicott High School. A short time later, he was enjoying the U.S. Army. Spent his time there, just under nine years in the U.S. Army, rose to the rank of Staff Sergeant in the Infantry. He then transitioned out of that into the U.S. Army, works with civilian affairs. Still is doing that. Other than that, he has his son here present, Kayden, who's enjoying being with his dad and having this moment with him. In addition, he's looking forward to a long and illustrious career with Cottage Grove Police Department. He wants to be a field training officer and hopes to also potentially rise to a canine handler if that opportunity presents itself in the future. So with that, I will turn over to the...
If you could raise your right hand, please. I, Riley Greenwald, who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer...
I, Riley Greenwald, who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer...
With the Village of Cottage Grove...
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws and ordinances of the village...
Swear that I will enforce state laws and ordinances of the village...
And support the Constitution of the United States...
And support the Constitution of the United States...
And the State of Wisconsin...
And the State of Wisconsin.
And I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
What's going on, Dad? Yep. Awesome. All right. Next then, we'll move to unfinished business. First up is discussing and consider Resolution 2023-09, Resolution awarding the sale of 3.000, 05500, 3 million plus. General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series 23A. Greg's there.
Good evening. There's a copy of the sale report that I'll summarize for the bond sale that was conducted this morning. So just to recap the purpose of this bond issue, there's a specific project list included in our exhibits. Just funded some of the Bakken Park improvements, some street improvement projects, and some equipment acquisition related to Public Works and the water and sewer utility. The bids were received this morning on the general obligation bonds. There were a total of seven bids received, which is a strong number of bidders. The winning bid was submitted by Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, with final true interest costs of 3.8248 percent. The net principal and interest was really much in line with our pre-sale estimate, only came in about $11,700 higher. So that's only the increase over the 20-year life of the bond. So very similar results to what we had presented last month. I'll briefly walk through the exhibits that were included in our sale day report. Table 1 is just the specific project list that identified the project costs that were financed. Approximately 3 million of project costs were funded through this debt issuance. The final sources and uses for the bond issue is shown in Table 2. We were able to downsize the bond issue due to lower cost of issuance expenses and a premium bid that was submitted by Northland. So the final amount that you're awarding is $3,015,000. So it's $40,000 less than the amount that was authorized last month. You still have the same amount for a project cost, just have to issue less bonds to fund the projects, which is always a preferable outcome. Table 3 shows the final debt service allocation for all of the projects that were financed. The park improvement projects were financed over 20 years. The street improvement projects were also financed over 20 years. And then the equipment portions of it are totaled to the Public Works Department, the water and the sewer utility. That was all amortized over five years. So the life of the bond issue, of the full bond issue is 20 years. Again, the total principal and interest came in at $4,247,806, which again was only about $11,700 higher than our pre-sale estimate. So the financial analysis really is, excuse me, right in line with what we presented back in May. So in Table 4, we show the tax impact of your existing debt, and then these proposed bonds. So under the proposed debt column, you'll see the debt service levy. Your existing levy was for 2023 for debt was approximately $1,106,000. You'll see the levy for debt service next year will increase approximately $253,500, which is again, very similar to the structure that we presented in our pre-sale report. This bond issue does count towards the village's general obligation debt limit. That's summarized in Table 5. At the end of fiscal year 2022, the village was at about 46 percent of its general obligation debt limit, projecting some growth in value by the end of this fiscal year. And including these, this bond issue, you're estimated to be about 44 percent of your debt limit, leaving just shy of 30 million for future borrowing needs. The other item I just want to mention that was included in our report is the ratings report from Standard and Poor's. Both Matt and Cameron did a great job of representing the village on the call with the rating analysts. I encourage you to review the report at your leisure. It's a nice third-party assessment of the village's overall financial strengths and the economic activity that's been going on in the village. The report is largely favorable, very positive comments regarding the village's financial management, both in terms of, you know, managing your budget on a year-to-year basis, but the long-range planning that the village has done for several years, very positive comments about how the growth seems to be, you know, planned and accounted for in terms of planning for future financial needs of the village. So very strong comments from, from Standard and Poor's. Your AA rating is a very strong rating and certainly was noted in the market, both in the number of bidders and in strong, you know, final interest rates. So the action that's on your agenda is just the resolution. Again, I'll comment that the borrowing amount is, is less, $3,015,000. If you choose to pass the resolution, there's a bid form that'll be signed by the village president and the village clerk, just providing evidence that you've accepted the bids as presented by Northland. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Greg? It's nice to see the positive, positive news regarding just getting the same amount, yet having to pay a little less, so. No questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution 2023-09 regarding awarding the sale of $3,015,000. Did I get that right? General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series 2023A.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brittany. Heard by David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
All right, then we'll move right to discuss and consider Resolution 2023-10 regarding polling locations. So there's some information in the packet regarding this. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Pretty straightforward. Due to the two polling locations, we need to set those by resolution, saying which wards will vote in which location. There is a map attached to the resolution, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-10 regarding polling locations as written.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we'll slide right down to new business, and we start off by discussing and consider the host permit for Madison Rugby.
I guess I can take that one, too. It is straightforward host permit, like you've done for other places in the village. The application was in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Lisa, in the permit, it says that they will mainly be placed in the concrete slab on Bakken Park. I'm trying to picture where that, is that like within, within their fenced area?
I said I'd answer questions, but I'm going to shoot that one to Sean because I, you don't know.
No, I believe that it's in their area.
I'm pulling up a map. Just wasn't super clear in the end. I guess my only, my only concern is that they, like a food truck, would park in the Bakken Park parking lot. I don't know, I don't, I guess, Sean, how real big is that concern, or am I just being paranoid?
It's not really too big of a concern, depending on the time and what else is going on there. But I believe that their intention is to keep it within the confines of their facility.
In this, in this last weekend, they had several vehicles with trailers at a very large event, and it all seemed to work out. There was parking, people were using parking beyond that parking lot as outlined by parking staff.
There's no, Miracle League, it gets a little tight on those days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Oh, if they're practicing, whatever.
No, on the, the nights of games, like that, that parking lot's pretty packed. And I know rugby tends to do things same night. That's really where my head went. Yeah, you know, I don't, philosophically, I don't have any issue with the app. It's just that the fact that it's not super clear on where they're going to park. Just give me...
I think you're moving on, moving down on the agenda. We're going to talk about that, the agreement.
Jumping ahead.
Yeah, that's okay. You're just providing us with a preview.
David, I can research a little bit more and get back to you if you'd like, if you want to take this...
I mean, they have plenty of concrete, like, behind their stands, or like, well, actually, on either side. I guess, I'm open to approving it as long as we get clarification and we're understanding, but we're going to talk about that here in a bit, so.
I will get clarification.
Yeah. I mean, directly, I'll make a motion to approve the host permit for Madison United Rugby as written.
All right, there's first from David. Is there a second?
Second.
Brittany, a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. This is a controversial one. Discuss and consider canceling the July 3rd board meeting. That's enough from you already. I queued up, Larry, for that one.
Do you come to shine? Second.
All right, first by Brittany, second by David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, discuss and consider the alcohol beverage license applications for the licensing year July 2023 through June 2024. In the packet, there was an attached list.
Guess I'll take that one, too.
It's Lisa's show today.
Yeah, I guess. So all the alcohol license have submitted their applications. We've done the background checks. Chief Gary did the walkthroughs, and we did not find any issues with any of the establishments. I will note, I do have one for CVS that has a hold because they have outstanding bill with their distributor, so that license will not be issued until that is resolved. And based off of what the motion is tonight, I will be contacting them tomorrow to let them know that. It doesn't, it doesn't change anything that you do. It's just that by statute, I can't release it until that's resolved.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license applications for licensing year July 2023 through June 2024 for the attached list.
First by David, second by Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Move right down to discuss and consider the amusement device permit applications for licensing year July 2023 through June 2024. Again, in our packet, there's an attached list.
Again, no issues with any of these. Just the annual approval of those applications.
I'll make a motion to approve the amusement device permit applications for licensing year July 2023 through June 2024.
First by Brittany. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then, next is discuss and consider the tobacco license application for licensing year July 2023 through June 2024. Again, there was a list in our packet.
Make a motion to approve the tobacco license apps for licensing year July 2023 through June 2024.
Second.
First by David, second by Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we move to discuss and consider the approval of the 2023 Streets Improvement Bid, which was in our packet.
Yeah, so the bid went out. Wolf Paving was the low bidder at $219,000, and that project is from BB to West Oak Street. It's going to be, we're, the ramps are all ADA, all the concrete work will be done, so everything up to, up to specs and par of what we are establishing as the criteria for new roads.
Brian, we just clarify the timeline of that, when, when it's actually going to occur.
I'll divert a Kyle on this one.
So for the project, because it's a pulverizing project, we don't want them, the contractor, to come in, pulverize, and then sit on it for multiple days. So per the contract, once construction has started, they have 45 days to complete construction completely. That includes all the asphalt work, all the pulverizing, the concrete work, because there's some driveways and curb and gutter that will be replaced. However, we also have, once they pulverize the asphalt completely, they have 14 days to be able to put the asphalt binder and surface down. So that'll really limit the amount of time that the project is, as we had last year with Taylor Street and Oak, that they're, and Weld Bridge, that they're kind of sitting longer than ideal. So hopefully that will, that's in the contract documents. We'll hold them to that for the project. They are substantially complete by September 15th, I think, is the date. So they have, as soon as you guys say yes, if you want to move forward with the project, then we'll move forward with getting contracts signed.
You hit right on the notes I was thinking about, too. Taylor and, yeah.
We don't want to have you guys concerned about that again. We made sure to eliminate it.
I was hoping we were just going to forget about that and move on, but that's, John, I, you know, that's okay.
That's, it's, it's in the back of the head a little bit. So, thank you for that. Any questions regarding street improvements?
Remind me, this is from, it's West Oak, from where to where?
It's from West Oak to BB Cottage Grove Road.
Is it from West Lawn to West Cottage Grove?
It's Crawford.
Oh, okay.
That's kind of a rough section there.
Okay. Either way, cool. I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 Streets Improvement Bid with the award going to Wolf Paving.
First by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Brittany. Any further discussion? Just want to make sure that we're communicating to everybody regarding when we're, when they're going to start the, the actual work. Because again, on flashback to when we redid Cottage Grove Road, we had some, some concerns there. Obviously, that impacted more businesses, but then this little section will, but still will impact the main thoroughfare within our village.
Absolutely. We, I know Brian sent out a letter. Did you send out that letter already?
Yeah, the letter went out about two weeks ago, roughly, just to notify our residents. We did get one person that called.
Okay.
Just had some random questions that were easily answered. So everything, otherwise, I mean, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, and then we'll just make sure we maybe leverage the, the big signs or whatever, just the...
For sure.
Prior to, so that maybe they can find a different route.
If you wouldn't mind, John, filling out the form for me?
No, I'll fill it out if you need me to.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make this one and only exception.
Communication, communication, communication. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, discuss and consider the proposed crossing guard policy. Lisa, I think that's you again.
Actually, I'm going to pass the policy.
You were on a roll, Lisa.
Well, our memo's in the packet for consideration. Essentially, as you may or may not be aware of, getting and keeping crossing guards is increasingly challenging. Lisa and I met with a couple of representatives from the school district that will work with moving forward, but we kind of wanted to bring our idea to this body first, given we provide this service for the school district, but the village provides it solely. So we drafted this policy, hoping that we could go back to them and say, this is what our board approved for us moving forward, that we're going to provide them in these locations. This is how it'll work when we have less, this is how it'll work when we have more. And then work with their team in those parameters each year and throughout the year as we gain and lose crossing guards. Essentially, the biggest piece is we're only going to provide them along main arterials, which are BB and, and the intersections could change over the years as development happens, and there's different paths, and the school district changes grade levels and sheer numbers and their transportation maps. But that way, at least, it gives us something to work from. Because basically, it's been, over the years, and Lisa, jump in anytime you want. If you go in, in their defense, I'd be the same way. You go to the, the principal at the time at any individual school, they have only one thing to say, and that's, give me my crossing guard, don't touch my crossing guard, leave my crossing guard alone. And, and that's what they should be advocating for. Lisa, all by herself, has to manage every school and where the kids are traveling, and it's just getting really difficult. So we have to start identifying, you know, what we think are the most appropriate spots. So, open to any questions, or, yep, you got something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it also gives us a little background then when we get residents that have issues when a crossing guard is not at a certain location, either due to shortage or changes in the busing routes or the grades at schools, that we can at least give them the guidelines and that it's not just, you know, we're arbitrarily picking which locations get a crossing guard, just because our roster is very, very, very thin. So it would be nice to have something to back that up.
Is, so I, obviously, I saw a post on Facebook a while ago about crossing guard getting abused by a parent. Is that a big thing? Is that a big reason why we're not able to retain those staff?
Cost us to lose one of them.
It's definitely one of the issues. I am just going to put a shameless plug into our crossing guards. When you see them, thank them because they are amazing individuals. And they get abused a lot by rude drivers. And, and I will say that, you know, possibly parents or whomever, and they're not really setting an example for their children to be good human beings in this world. So, and there are a lot of drivers that I would say don't take it serious enough when they come into those locations, and Chief, you probably can agree to this. They're always in a rush. It's always, you know, our fault that it's backing up, or our fault that, whatever the case may be. And who's the first person that they run into is the crossing guard. So that's part of it. Part of it is just different circumstances for people. You know, most of the time, people take it because they see it as a public service to their community, that they're really giving back, and truly they are. And so people come and go because either health issues or that. But a lot of it truly is the workforce this day and age. It's really hard when it's an extremely part-time. If you're not connected to your community or to a, a service, it's really hard to keep those positions filled. And I see that... And I see that all the time when we get posts, because I'll get a lot of people, I can't tell you how many people, um, have filled out applications, we'll go through the whole background, I'll talk to them, you know, we'll get it all worked out, and they're doing it for X, Y, and Z reason, and it never happens. So, it, it's just a really tough gig.
Well, is, I guess my question was going to be, can we cite those folks for disorderly conduct? I mean, when, as a young man, I was a bus driver, Chief, and I could report license plate numbers and have those people send tickets, um, for passing and such.
So, as a bus driver, you have different statutory rights than the crossing guards do. If we receive a complaint, we'll investigate it. The downside is, is it requires that crossing guard to be our witness and to be willing to go to court and to testify, because we're not there at the time of the violation. And so, a lot of times, and this is no fault of theirs, they'll report the incident, but want no act, formal action taken. They just want a counseling session. And we'll follow through on all of those types of matters. But, uh, they definitely, they have a difficult job. And as the motoring public continues to get a little more impatient, it makes their jobs even more difficult.
I can tell you, it's never the crossing guard's fault when there's a backup. It's always the parents who don't follow the rules. I know this because I pick kids up at the middle school all the time, they never pull forward. So, just gonna throw that out there.
And so, my first line of a defense is when we get a complaint from a parent, or if we've had to eliminate a crossing guard because we don't have staffing, is I always encourage them to apply. Or, you know, there's other things. JJ had a great idea of walking bus. Um, you know, we try to get people engaged and try to get them to step up. The problem is, they just wanna do it like on a volunteer basis. Well, we have to have it more than just volunteer as well. So, it's just, it's just difficult.
Lisa, I have a question. For the ranking, so, um, it looks like there would be four crossing guards at minimum staffing level, right? And then if it had to go below four, those four spaces will be ranked, like one, two, three, four?
Correct.
Okay. And you think the schools, you look to the school district to help provide that ranking?
That, that was our thinking, was if this goes through here, that then we work with whoever they assign, we've got two folks we met with, and if that remains our context, then we talk to them about working in these parameters, yep, setting those rankings each year. I anticipate they'll, they'll change over the years.
Yeah, in our meeting we had prior to drafting this, um, they seemed receptive to that too, but we thought it was best that it comes to our board first. And then we'll, we'll present it to them.
So, JJ and Lisa, I'm kinda curious about, um, just comparing present data to the proposed policy. Noticeable, like the Taylor Prairie crossing guard, which is always notoriously some of the biggest backups are at Taylor Prairie. For obvious reasons, because it's, I mean, new kids, new parents, right, it's new for everybody. I guess, help me understand, I think I'm need a further clarification of Sarah's question, right? So like, is the idea that if we had enough crossing guards, we'd sta- we'd station one at Taylor Prairie, but if we don't have enough, we won't pull one at Taylor Prairie?
You can take that if you'd like.
Okay. So, no, yes and no. If, in the perfect world, we had enough to do the main areas that we did, and we had extra people, then it could be a possibility. But if you look at the maps of the busing routes of the school and what the walkability is around Taylor Prairie, it literally is just the houses around the school. So, it's basically, people are getting bused, or it's parents dropping off. And it's in, I'm not gonna say it right, it inside neighborhood street, so the speeds are slower. It's my understanding that they do have a staff member from the school that is on the school property. So, in my opinion, that's a lower priority than, um, Weld Bridge and Main Street, because you have a bigger walkability. If you look at Cottage Grove Elementary, um, transportation map, you have a really big walking area, and that school is first and second graders, I believe. So, I think that, um, you know, the Taylor Prairie, not to diminish it, but it's 4K and, I mean, they're not going out there by themselves.
I think you'll see a lot of parents will dr- just because they don't wanna go in, pull into the parking lot, they'll go down the block, drop it off and let their kid walk to school. When I was doing drop off, I was guilty of that, so.
Well, and that's what I, anecdotally, and the grades were different, but when I was filling in there in emergency situations a couple of times, people were coming from all different, we were stationed at the driveway, but they were coming from the north end and, and all different directions.
It's, it, you know, my oldest now is 13, going into eighth grade, and I've, I mean, I think we went to Taylor Prairie the longest, and I've seen the most egregious issues at Taylor Prairie. Granted, I'm with you, Lisa, that it's, it's the most students should be bused, but I would say there's probably more that walk, or get dropped off just because that parking lot is such a disaster to get out of. I think the other, the other thing too is the, um, the, the four-way stop at Manley and Damascus is, I, you know, at the end of the day, we can't recruit, right? Like, people are just, we're having, we're struggling, right? So you have to make cuts, you know? You have to make some important, you know, some, some tough decisions, but, um, Manley, Damascus, I think, is also a rough one. I think that, I don't know, I wish more people would just respect crossing guards and make it easy. But, it's just, I think, in terms of pushback or blowback, I think the fact that, that our plan is removing Manley and Damascus, and then one in front of Taylor Prairie, I think there'll be quite a lot of frustrated parents, but my rebuttal to that would've been like, where were you all this time? Why didn't you apply to be a crossing guard? You know, I think there were a lot of people I know, um, at Taylor and Weld Bridge, who were like, lots of parents who were like, where's the crossing guard? I'm like, where did, did you apply? That was always my rebuttal. And the answer's like, no, I don't have time, or it's only an hour in the morning, an hour at night, and I'm like, rocking a hard place, so, thanks.
I was wondering, are there any other traffic calming, maybe we already covered this, sorry, I came in a few minutes late. Are there any other traffic calming strategies we could use, even if it's planning them in future road projects to slow traffic down at some of these, in some of these areas that used to have crossing guards but don't now? Like, crossing Main Street in front of Cottage Grove School, it's, that's a long ways to cross to have, you know, push it in. I know that's, snow plowing is like, oh, I don't know about that, but, yeah, maybe we think about that?
No, of course, roundabouts have always been the, the ideal solution there. Um, you know, in our capital plan, we do have RFBs going up, you know, at Taylor and, and Main, and, you know, there's possibilities of looking at doing that elsewhere also to help. But those two avenues are, are the usual ones you go for. Yeah, it's gonna be more time and it's more overtime for that, but it, you know, the, the idea of safety is, is a little more important. So, I mean, if that's the route we need to go to make our, our citizens and our kids safe out there, I mean, we'll definitely take that step, I think, as far as public works is concerned.
Okay, thanks. Maybe if there's something in the bike and pedestrian plan, as we think about that too, we can add stuff like that in there around school routes?
In the current draft form, there are quite a few projects that would incorporate those kind of improvements, yep.
I'll make a motion to, um, adopt the crossing guard policy as written by staff.
Second. Motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. And then we'll move down to, uh, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, starting with police commission. Chief?
So, the police commission met on Wednesday, May 10th, uh, at 5:30. They had a forum. The main topic was, we were conducting interviews for officer candidates. Out of that meeting, uh, they forwarded two names, uh, into the background process and further testing. Those two candidates are currently at that stage, have not been, uh, finalized yet. They then nominated and set the chair and secretary for the next one-year period. Mr. Robinson is the chair, Ms. Williams is the secretary. We reviewed the 2022 annual report. Questions? And then there was a discussion, action on my request for residency extension. They extended, uh, the residency requirement until continue to search for residency.
All right. Any questions for Chief? And now move to peer court. David?
Uh, I'm pulling up my notes. Um, met on May 16th. Through the minutes, uh, so far, uh, there's been no, as of May 16th, there were no referrals, uh, this year from Cottage Grove, so things are really slow for a peer court. Claudia discussed, uh, 2023 Briar Patch's goals. Um, Briar Patch is still working through them, but she walked us through what they currently have. Attached that to the agenda, and then, uh, set our next meeting, and then we adjourn.
David, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it a good thing that there have been no referrals? I'm guessing we have had receiving citations that might need to be referred?
It hasn't been referred, so, I mean, I mean, Mark, you were at the meeting too, I mean, it, I took that as a positive sign, that there's not, kids aren't getting in too much trouble or not getting caught.
The, uh, yes, there have been some juveniles that have received citations, others have been, uh, moved through the system in different routes due to their prior history. So, at this time, there was nothing that wanted to appear.
Can you just remember? It used to come to the court.
The, as I understand, the, the county still, even through the pandemic, the county refers them to peer, to peer court.
Before the pandemic, we used to have had a juvenile who may have sat in such a thing, a number of years ago, he'd come and the judge would say, go to peer court. Right? And that's not how it is now?
Still is, yeah.
Still is.
Yep.
Now, please change on that avenue.
Yeah.
I'm going through it right now. As the victim of a crime, of a young man, and the DA, the DA's office contacted me, asked me what I wanted to do. And I said, peer court would be fine. And then Briar Patch reached out to me just last week to set up my engagement and involvement in the situation.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, I'll move to library board. David, again.
Uh, met on Thursday, May 18th. Um, I could not stay for the whole meeting, but the Fitchburg, Fitchburg Library Director came and spoke, uh, and gave, uh, kind of recounted the history of Fitchburg's library. We then, uh, approved youth involvement on the facility subcommittee. Uh, there was a discussion around capital projects, and then I had to leave after that, but, uh, based on my notes, uh, we talked about some proposed programming, uh, approved the bills, walked through the facility subcommittee as well as the policy subcommittee. Cindy gave her update, and the friends gave an update, and then our next meeting is Wednesday, June 21st.
Thank you, David. All right, we'll move to Deer Grove EMS Commission. I'll take a swing at this, and then you can keep me honest. So, we met on May 18th. Went through the normal bring them role of, uh, the financials, budgets, um, write-offs, and the agent counts, everything actually looks very good, uh, year-to-date. The, uh, staff report, uh, there was again, some good stuff there as far as EMS reaching out to, uh, various organizations, doing training, et cetera. And, um, then, a bit of a discussion on, uh, the replacement for M80, which is the next ambulance to be replaced. And, um, no, no action was taken at that point, but this, with M80, they're going to just replace the truck part and keep the actual ambulance portion, uh, from the M80. So, it's gonna be a little less expensive, but it still continues to be pricey for all types of uh, emergency-type vehicles or plows or whatever else, um, as well. Then, uh, we switched the commission officers and elected a new chair and secretary. So, that switches every year, uh, amongst the municipalities, that went through, and then, um, touched on a closed session item, nothing out of that, and that was pretty much it. We meet next, uh, and I think it's June 12th, and we, I'm sorry, not June 12th, in June. And we'll be rotating back to Deerfield like we used to do. We used to rotate between Deerfield and Cottage Grove, uh, emergency building. Deerfield has a new, uh, village hall, so we're gonna take advantage of that. And be meeting over there. Brittany didn't cover everything? Okay. Oh. Greg, yeah, he wasn't there, that's why. I'm like, I was trying to, I was doing the same thing, I'm like, no, Greg wasn't there, he got selected, yes. Uh, so, it was, um, Deerfield's turn. Yeah, he did. He was prepped, I think, a couple of meetings ago. So.
And then just as an additional piece of information
Oh, sorry, Chief.
Yeah, just an additional piece of information that y'all get before the rest of the communities is, we've completed the radio install process, and, uh, thank you for your support with that, so our mobiles are installed, uh, and everything's working fantastically, and we're happy to finally have that brought to an end.
Wonderful. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. Yeah, that's very good news. Then we'll move right to, uh, Nedbeck, Landfill.
Landfill, uh, met May 22nd. Approved the minutes. Approved the bills. There were no new monitoring results. We didn't held elections, we just opted to keep, uh, the the chair and the secretary the same, so I get to take the notes again. Did a gen, future gen items, and then our next meeting is Monday, July 24th. It was a whopping three minutes and 55 seconds.
Wow. And you're going down in seconds, that's a good meeting. All right, uh, then Fire District.
Yeah, let me pull that one up. That was a fun one. We met same day, about a half hour later. Chief gave his report. We then had a, uh, there was a, had to buy new switches, uh, and, and thanks to Vince's quick look, the quote that was sent over, it was like for a switch, and they had miscalculated, it was $16, about $130, I think it was about $130 or so, um, overage, so we had to approve the, the over approved amount. We then discussed, uh, electric vehicle fires and possible equipment needs. That was kind of an interesting thing. Um, kind of the leading candidate right now for electrical fires is a, basically a blanket, a sheet that you pull over, uh, the car. If you think, and I, when I think of electrical fire in a, in an EV, it's usually like a Tesla, so, it's like a Model 3. When the fire gets to the batteries, uh, the fire departments are told to just let the thing melt down, like, just leave it alone. It's, because it's gonna be a total loss anyways. And there's concerns over, like, if the fire gets hot enough, is it gonna damage the roadway, or could any other cars get involved? So like, we had them kind of, we had the fire department go and do some research, and essentially amounts to, uh, there's, really, there's two options, the blanket, um, and it takes anywhere from, I don't know, four to five hours for the fire to calm down. Um, and then there's another piece of equipment that's very, very expensive, that actually punctures, uh, the battery from underneath the car, uh, and then fills it full of water. Um, again, neither are ideal scenarios, so, thankfully, the fire department has not had to deal with EV fires yet, it's only a matter of time though. And they sound really, really not fun. Um, and you have to dump a lot of water on them, so, we kinda, it was more of a, just a discussion. And then we talked about solar panel fires and possible equipment needs there, namely because of the, in the town, the big solar panel farm. There, it was more concerns around house fires, um, and cutting off the electric from the solar panel to the house. There are sheets, there are There are sheets, they're much cheaper than EV sheets. But again, not, not an over, I didn't think there was a big concern or ton of motivation or incentive to do anything. It was just more research than anything. Yeah, that was the other thing too.
Wow.
Especially for the cars.
That's a tough blanket.
Yeah. Then we discussed selling tender one. We gave the fire department kind of directionally guidance to sell that on Wisconsin surplus. And then we discussed expense allocation for the radios. There was some interesting conversation around the new tender that's coming and how does that relate to the radios? We ultimately, we're only talking about, I think, five to six hundred dollars for radios, maybe, maybe a thousand or two thousand. Don't quote me on the numbers, I can get you the numbers if you really need them. But we did agree to, to cover the radios for the vehicles that the village doesn't own. However, the tenders, you know, there's some conversation after the meeting around that one for the new tender coming. Then we discussed the sale of the old radios as well as discuss selling of old fire hose. Again, Wisconsin surplus there. Then we held officer elections. Hampton is the chair. Trying to think, is it, I'm the vice chair? Yeah, I'm the vice chair and then Vince gets to be the secretary. I'm excited about that one.
And you were there?
Set new agenda items and then our next meeting date, which I can't, it's the twenty fourth. Any questions?
Question? Then we'll move right down to Law Enforcement Committee. Swing at this and then Chris. Keep me honest. So we met on the twenty third of May. Discuss unfinished business, emergency go bag, emergency management go bag. Chief wants to initially do an outlay within the, within his budget of five hundred hours, which the committee approved. To at least get the first pieces in place and then evaluate that further with lieutenant for probably a little more. Definitely will be a little bit more in the future and we'll cover that in the twenty four budget for multiple bags and have, probably have, certainly have more equipment. But we, we want to make sure that we do have multiple facilities in case the emergency management building is unfortunately the building that gets taken out by something. Or there's a situation there. So that's where it currently resides, but we want obviously a backup or two or three. So we talked about that, new business, went into discussion about the squad fleet. And this is a very interesting too, I think, for me at least. The sheer amount of money that we're putting into some of these vehicles, they're just, and we're taking out one squad, one sixty one, is being put out of commission right now because it's just, it's too expensive to put more money into it. So it's going to be reserved for spare parts or reserved for sitting around somewhere if need be. And then Chief explained how going forward, we're going to, instead of, what we've done in the last few years is one squad car replacement. We're looking at at least two a year to kind of get us caught up. And then in some years, we may actually have three again, due to the growth of department as well. The other part of this, flip side of that is, oh, why, the way you can't get any cars are these squads. Ford still has not committed to producing the vehicle that we've put on order for this year. And so we talked about how we may have to order those squad cars early in the, earlier in the year, even before our budget's finalized in order to actually get our place in line for that. And this is not only Ford, but other manufacturers doing the same thing. They just are slotting out certain production times, doing the vehicles and then, and then moving on. So and certainly because we're only ordering one of them at a time, we, by that, we actually get placed further in behind the line as it goes anyway. Went through all the reports. Activity is steady. You know, the officers are engaged in the community, which is good. I give Chief a couple of examples that I observed this, over the weekend, this week, that were very positive and I wanted to share that with him. Then he also updated us on the oxygen delivery. The officers right now do have oxygen in their cars and there was discussion with the EMS chief on this. Oxygen is actually considered a drug or medicine. But the way, you know, the regulations are, you get, you know, pointed this way, pointed that way. Finally got pointed, Chief got pointed to OSHA. And essentially a layperson like lifeguards can administer, you know, oxygen. So right now, the decision by the PD is to continue to do, provide that service if needed, when needed. And then that was pretty much it. Chief, did I miss anything or Chris?
So I am back here today. Hi, everyone. So as part of, you know, Chief brought this issue up with the squads, you know, a couple of months ago and about how, how do we get the, the vehicles we need and replenish our fleet? For both accomplish our growth as well as how hard they're being ridden. And so the, the memo that I provided last week, really, that I'm asking that the board takes action on is gives Chief Gary the ability to, when he is able to order vehicles, to go ahead and do that. We would come back, obviously, if, when we were given a price and update the board on what the, the vehicles would cost. I did list out three options. I do think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, the, the most likely option is likely that we're going to be placing an order for three squad cars in twenty twenty four. I, I haven't heard any update that will actually receive the twenty twenty three order. But I did list those various scenarios out, but ultimately just asking the, the board to give Chief Gary to move forward as he sees fit.
We do not have a date for production of the twenty twenty three squad. Still looking with the dealership on that. Again, Ford is producing cars and saying they have supply chain issues. So I know departments that have received their twenty twenty threes already. I know departments that have not, were one of the nots. So I can't say if we're ever going to get a twenty twenty three or if we're going to end up moving into the twenty twenty four model year.
Any questions regarding squads?
And are we, are we pretty much restricted to the Ford? I mean, there's no other competition we could look at?
There's other competition. There, Chevy has the Tahoe's for SUV style vehicles. Dodge has the Durangos. Price points, Ford has historically been the lowest in price. Once, and all the manufacturers have gone the route of sort of the specialized vehicles as TPW is running into, as the fire service, as EMS is running into. You need to order ahead and then we'll produce the car or the vehicle. So they, I have not received word on when they're opening up this next ordering session. I've got two emails and one to Madison dealership and another one to Hartford dealership that usually gets state contracts. And I have not gotten a response back yet that they have opened bids yet. So once we have the prices and usually from those dealerships, it covers the three manufacturers, the three main manufacturers. So that we have the comparables to see what's going to be the best for the village.
Do you know average upkeep costs for the other two vehicles?
What was that?
Do you know the average upkeep cost for the two vehicles?
The upkeep, we have.
Because I know this, this car would cost about twenty four grand and you put in twenty two grand back into it?
Put twenty, over its life, it's had twenty two put into it. I can tell you over life of most of the older squads were edging up on the, between the eight and ten thousand dollar investment into it in upkeep. Obviously, the newer squads, those price tags are down. I think it was the twenty that had, because of some damage that had been done, village invested about four thousand into that.
I'm just curious if, because if the Fords cost a certain amount and then you basically have to pay double to upkeep it, like a Dodge, over the life of the vehicle, it might cost more to buy it, but is it going to cost less to repair it? I don't.
That I don't have a definitive answer on for you right at the moment. I definitely can do that research also, give you a good ballpark to understand where, where it's at for the different manufacturers.
Can you talk about the operational impact of losing a vehicle and what happens if you lose another one? Like, what does that mean for the officers we're hiring? Are they, what are they doing? Are they getting on bikes or what's the?
Well, we do have bicycle patrol. But what it truly is going to do, the ripple effect that's going to occur is we'll end up putting more mileage, wear and tear on the fleet. And as the fleet continues to get smaller, we're going to probably cycle through cars a lot quicker than what the village wants to do. So again, that's why I want to get a rotation. I'd already talked about, as Cameron referenced, when I came in, I wanted to get into a rotation plan for the future, for the fleet. So this just sort of expedited one of those cars a little sooner than I wanted. I was hoping I was going to be able to get it through till twenty four. That's not the case right now. And the reference to keeping it as parts, yes, we're keeping it as parts for some of the other vehicles in the fleet and then it'll go to auction. Try and recoup whatever we can out of it.
We had talked about, and Public Works, similar, if we're only ordering one vehicle per year, we can, we get bumped down in the priority list. So I would be supportive in, you know, ordering three at once and we could, maybe we'll actually get vehicles if we move up higher in the priority list. I would, of course, also add in that it would be great if we could continue with hybrids, electric, of course, when it's available. But the operational expenses with hybrids and slower speeds and stop and go city style driving, you know, will help with the gas mileage. So, you know, just replacing it with a hybrid, you know, which should help with costs as well. So I would, I would support, you know, moving ahead with the three vehicles. As long as Cameron says we can do that financially.
Yeah. And realistically, if we, if for some magic reason we got two cars this year and had to pay for an additional car, there are capital funds available for that. That's why we kind of built that, that structural surplus in that fund and why it's important to keep that fund healthy. Because those are the kind of vehicles we can't go down. And, and the, the action that we're asking is vague on intentional. So if for some reason a different option besides Ford comes up, that gives Chief still the authority to go out and make the best purchase for the fleet.
Chief, I, I want to make a motion, but I do want to ask a question. Kind of back going off what Vince was asking, is there a point, if, is there a number of vehicles that go down at which point you do have to bring out the bikes or you have to double or triple up? I mean, is there, I'm just trying to understand how the, how dire is the situation?
Truly, if we went down two more cars, I could probably stretch if we went down three, we'd be dire. And we've got this one that's out of service. I've got another one in, in the fleet that's at the same mileage, it's another sixteen. I would, we have not, we've put investment into it. But if we have a major malfunction like this, that one will come out of service also because the village has already made the investment the same as this one. So I'm hoping that we can avoid those issues.
So just so the math works out in my head, right? So there, this one's down, so you're saying two additional or one more?
Two additional.
Two additional and then we're in dire straits. Okay. Okay. Cool. With that, I will make a motion to authorize the Chief of Police to manage fleet purchases.
All right. First and second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Am abstain? Motion carries. Move down to Parks. Heidi?
Yep, thanks. So we met on Thursday, May twenty fifth. And we did have a visit from a neighbor of Fireman's in Bakken Park and wanted to talk to us about being somewhat proactive on the opening of the skate park and the additional amenities that'll be opening at Bakken to make sure that every, all users are being respectful of neighbors and not using amplified music and taking care of the park. So we're going to work on some signage and at the Wheels Park grand opening, you know, really talk about it's the responsibility of all the users to make sure this is a great place for everyone. So it was a good discussion piece that Neighbor brought forward. We also talked about, which we have in front of us this evening, an agreement with Madison United Rugby for use of park facilities and coordinating parking and use of additional resources from EMS and police staff. So that agreement is attached for us this evening. We also talked about transitioning to a new registration program that talks better with our website. It'll be more user friendly, it'll be less expensive. Cameron has a whole bunch more information on it. And Sean can probably add some stuff in too, so I'll turn it over to them to give some more details.
Yeah, I'll start. So this, this, this whole project kind of goes to the line on how, how can we streamline things for our residents, make things easier, more accessible? As well as provide better functionality internally for staff. So currently, you know, we, we pay ActiveNet about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year for that service. That's a combination of transaction fees as well as what we owe ActiveNet. So for the, I'm projecting that at least for the first couple of years, we'll be about break even with ActiveNet. But as time goes on, we, that option will be, become significantly cheaper than where we're at. And right now, ActiveNet is a pretty, at least the version that we're using is a pretty archaic option. This process started a couple of months ago, or several months ago now. Trista had brought it up initially during the twenty twenty three budget process. We did want to take some time vetting it out, making sure it could deliver all the things that we wanted it to at similar or less cost going forward. So kind of with how we had structured ARPA, so I'm recommending that we split this cost fifty fifty between our capital fund and ARPA. As, as I mentioned, those are kind of like those one-time costs with potential to reduce future cost. So that's why that funding is split as laid out as such. And it will eventually allow us to do, like a POS system at our concession stands as well. I will integrate with that. Anything else you want to add, Sean?
No, I think you covered it. Most important thing is it, it's going to be a better experience for our customers. As Cameron mentioned, it is pretty archaic. And since the pandemic, we're really having trouble getting, getting support from them. I don't know if it's a staffing issue on their part, but we have a problem. We wait several days before we can get anything resolved. So we're really excited about this software. We think it's going to help us a lot and make things a lot easier, especially communication, as I mentioned, with our, our customer interface stuff. So we're excited and, and we know, we've researched this, we've talked to several other communities that use Civic Rec. And to this point, everybody's happy with it. We're excited.
Civic Rec is, it's a discuss and consider to adjust the budget and then the budget amendment and then staff would move forward with implementing for next year. Like when the, the program comes out for registration for next year, is that the right timing? So there'll be a lot of education for people, for our residents on how to register in the new system.
It'll coincide hopefully with our, our spring/summer program guide.
So this is on prem or is this software as a service? It's not clear to me.
Software as a service.
And the integration that you're speaking of is around with our on prem? You said it, ActiveNet doesn't do a good job in integrating with our.
So there are a couple of things. So what ends up happening a lot is, you know, I'm a resident, I go on, I try to, I try to create account. Oh, I don't, either don't remember my password. You get hun, you're not 100 accounts, but it's just a half a dozen accounts for individual person. Like this software does a better job of identifying, oh, we have several instances of the same person. The reports, while it doesn't have direct integration, it has more complex reports to be able to actually analyze the data, both from a financial aspect as well as, you know, Sean's planning programs and stuff on, on what, how to properly staff and such.
And the price tag, so like you said, it looks like it's about a probably like a two-year payback for the implementation fee. And then it's $6,300 a year going forward. What is that $6,300? Is that based on the number of registered users or how is the?
Just a flat, so the, the initial investment is really that's all the time that they're going to spend. Or sorry, the, the initial cost, the $18,900, that's the initial cost it's going to take to get all of our programs updated, configure the, the portal to Cottage Grove. And then the $6,300, it only goes up indexed per the contract. I think it was either four or five percent a year. We do catch a little bit of a break where because active net was also asking, or also the, the payment provider, we get a little, we are able to negotiate a little bit better with Forte, who is the, the underlying payment provider for the software. So we get to, as our rec sales increase, we get to see a reduction in our overall cost for the, the convenience fee. So there's two, kind of, it's hard to, to compare them apples to apples with the, because the $6,300 is just the portal portion. We also then would have the processing fees for the actual transactions. But when you line it up, so like if, if we were completely on board in 2024, so that's our $6,300 cost, we're probably coming up with about $6,000 or $7,000 of credit card fees on top of that. So we'd eventually get to a price point and, and 2024, 2025, where we're about the same as active net, but for a much superior product.
So that's, that leads me to my last question. Into, I heard you say the version we're on of active net. Does that mean that's not a software as a service? We must host that if, if there's a version.
Yes. I believe so. And it costs for us, it costs significant for us to move up in versions.
Yeah, that was my question. Like where do you, if you spend 18 grand
You get it all.
To the correct version of what we have today, does that give us any benefit that we wouldn't have by going to the software?
And we, we get it all instead of having to buy modules that sometimes we only need one thing out of that module and it costs us $10,000 or whatever that is. So we get everything once we purchase.
The question was, is that software installed on our server or is that hosted somewhere else?
I'm sorry, it is not installed on our server.
So it's not a version thing. It's a, it's a, it's a subscription problem, right?
Sure.
Got it, okay.
Which leads me to my question, Cameron. So if, how are, are you able to capitalize these, these expenses if it's all software as a service?
So you capitalize the initial investment, but just as of active net, active net runs in Parks and Rec's operating budget. So when Sean creates his programic budget, he builds that into the cost of his program. So indirectly pass through to the customer. So just the initial software and setup can be capitalized. That makes, so.
I'm not an accountant, but I do work, play one on TV, so I've, I've never heard that before, but we can touch base offline. I've never never heard that one. That's a new one.
We could, we could talk about.
Yeah, I'm genuinely curious because I have customers every day telling me, like, I can't capitalize this. Again, more education for me, but I, I trust you.
Any other questions? Otherwise it's discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to approve the initial investment in Civic Rec, including budget amendment 2023-005.
First by David, is there a second? Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Let me slide down to the Bakken Park agreement with Madison United Rugby.
So it covered the highlights a little bit, that dividing up the parking lots, excluding the new parking lot, which doesn't exist technically yet, although the base four does. So that will be off limits for rugby parking. So regular users of park will be able to use that lot. And then it's a division of the main parking lot at Bakken. Then the staff would analyze use of emergency EMS and police services if there should be an additional fee to help cover that because do have to add, you know, change resources around with EMS when there's large rugby events and such. So the ability to negotiate that opens the door for shuttle services in the future to require them to do that. Am I missing any other big points on it, Sean?
The most important thing is just kind of, we've had handshake agreements with rugby since, you know, for a long time. And with rugby growing and our park getting full, we wanted to kind of memorialize some of those things and make sure that everyone had an opportunity. We can't, we're certainly not looking to prevent them from doing things that, that they want to do, but we also need to be able to make sure that we have spaces in the park available as well for, for residents. So just some, some highlights of, of what we, is in the agreement is getting, once, getting their dates as quickly as we can by prior to January 1, because we open up our shelter reservations on January 1. So we want to make sure that if they, when, when there's a big event such as last weekend, we would not want to have a shelter reservation at that location as well. It's just too much going on in one spot. So they pay on, on the larger events, especially when they need our soccer fields, they reserve and rent the shelter as well, just to kind of minimize and just keep another, another group out of there. Let's see, notify in the police department EMS updates, which is something that, that they haven't done in the past. And as Heidi mentioned, do some, some, looking at some shuttle services and things like that to, to move people around. They've been really agreeable on all of this and it's been, it's been a good process to work with them on this. So yeah, it was crazy busy there over the weekend. And one thing that we're, I don't know if, probably haven't noticed, but we're going to paint 35 stalls in the lot a different color than the current white. And so what that basically represents is that, that 35 stalls is their percentage of what the parking lot would be if there wasn't Bakken Park. So like, that's, they have seven acres, so that's that percentage of the overall parking lot. So we're going to make sure that 35 stalls are available to them and that hopefully they, on, on days when they do not rent the shelter, then we're asking that they limit it to that 35 stalls so that we can still have park activities there as well.
Any questions on the agreement?
I just have a quick question. Do we charge other organizations?
The only organizations that use it right now are MG, so no. If someone outside of that were to come in and want to use our facilities, yes, we would.
We won't be charging?
We do not. We, we charge them for the shelter.
Right.
But not for the fields.
So basically renting the shelter includes the fields.
Correct. In this, in this instance, yes. Yeah. If you were to, to reserve the shelter, that does not include. Well, you can still use them, but they're not necessarily yours for that day.
Yeah, okay. And we're good with that? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to understand what, because they're good partners.
Yeah, it's never, yeah, we've never really wanted to make it about the money part of things. And they use the, the soccer fields as just overflow warmup. Sometimes they actually use them for competition, but mostly it's just overflow warmup and just a lot of, lot of traffic back and forth between the facilities.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And when they submit their dates prior to January 1st, they let you know as well in case MG wanted to, we don't run into double booking the soccer fields?
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with Madison United Rugby as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
I had just a couple of other notes that I missed from the meeting. We went over the park development funds, which Cameron put together for us on, some funds are designated for certain parks and some are unrestricted. So he laid that out for us. We do have a relatively healthy balance in park development funds from various developers. And we should be able to draw from that for the Shady Grove Park when that neighborhood moves forward or some other smaller park projects coming up. So that's good news as we look at our capital prioritization process. Also, there's been a lot of work going on at the Wheels Park and also the pickleball and tennis courts. So there's a lot going on there. And the opening of the pickleball courts at Community Park went very well, lessons. I think everyone is very excited about it. And you may notice some covered AED cabinets that have been installed in various parks, but the AEDs are not there yet. So they're all covered up with garbage bags until the AEDs are actually inside. So that's moving along. Otherwise, I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I see people playing pickleball at Community Park all the time. It makes me happy.
It's awesome.
I haven't played yet, but I walk by it a lot and it makes me happy.
Awesome.
But not after 10 o'clock at night. Which was over the weekend. So they improvised with lighting.
They were playing with no lights?
No, they were playing with two cars parked there, pulled into there, so.
It was just a rubber match.
I felt for the residents behind there, so. Unless they were the ones playing, which could have been, so then I'm okay. So if there's a complaint, we'll definitely take care of it. But it's great to see that, that being used.
So then reports from village officers, first thing up then, I have a nomination for the, for the zoning board appeals, Lana Nelson. I don't know if there's any questions, comments regarding that, but Lana volunteered, which was great.
I'll make a motion that we approve the nomination of Lana Nelson to the zoning board of appeals.
Motion and second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Anything from you, Larry? Super. Then communication business, starting, starting off there, the consideration for the vouchers as presented. Any questions, comments regarding the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
My second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence? I don't have any. Does anyone else have any? All right. Upcoming community events. It's getting that time of year.
Fireman's Festival and Parade and Weekend of Fun and Hot to Trot and all that. Hold on, yards.
And if those are, folks are hungry on Sunday morning, the Lions Shelter at the Fireman's Park there will be serving up pancakes like they do every year. So yeah, that'll be a great weekend in a couple of weeks. I hope we can cross our fingers for great weather.
Have you got upcoming event and going out into August, August 17th is Community Night Out for Cottage Grove. It's on our Facebook page. We'll be going out also. More details, but invite everybody from Cottage Grove to come out to Bakken Park and have a good evening. Food, movies, music. Look forward to seeing everybody. Thursday, August 17th.
Speaking of just future dates, Market Days is also in July too as well. So that'll be, when it gets a little closer, we'll plug that one too. Anything else? All right, then we'll move to future agenda items. Usual suspects, next meeting we'll have plan and commission items from that. And I believe we'll be still talking prioritization because we're already, it's already getting into summer and before you know it, we'll be talking about budgets. So we'll need to go in on that. So those are the ones I'm aware of. Cameron or Aaron, anything? Ryan or JJ, anything else?
No, tentatively kind of departments have been asked to start, have all their lists to me by June 16th. So once I have a time to kind of meet with all the departments, we'll get that, that listing out to everyone to vote on.
You had the show tonight, so. All right, then with that, we'll move in, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. This is a closed session regarding the employees' compensation. The Village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Statute 19.85, Part C1, Part C2, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government or body has jurisdiction or recognize or exercises responsibility.